Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross, Mr. Mosley, Mrs. Kail Smith, Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavell, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our next order of business will be proclamations. We'll begin with Councilman Coghill.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. If I can ask Joel, Maria, Chris, and Jen to please come up? We're going to want you right here, Jen. For those of you who know about NAMI, the National Alliance of Mental Health, these people do really, really great work throughout our state and also beyond our state, correct? So I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize them and thank you for coming in early. Sorry, we have a little bit of a late start, but we're getting there. So, "We're as a national alliance of mental health, Keystone, Pennsylvania is part of a national affiliate that has blossomed into the nation's leading voice on mental health embodying the values of hope, inclusion, empowerment, compassion, and fairness." They envision a world where all people affected by mental health illness live healthy, fulfilling lives supported by care and community. And whereas over 20% of adolescents in the United States have a diagnosis, mental health condition, 50% of mental health problems are established by age 14. Two in five high school students struggle with persistent feelings of sadness or hopelessness. And suicide is the second leading cause of death for youth and young adults ages from 10 to 24. And NAMI, Keystone, Pennsylvania, as part of their ongoing commitment to help combat this youth crisis, is holding a youth mental health conference taking place on Friday, February 7th, in downtown Pittsburgh. "We commend NAMI, Keystone, Pennsylvania, as the conference supports your changemakers, encourages your mental health leadership, provides resources to help your negative, youth navigate trauma and challenges, identifies strategies for positive mental health, and offers intervention models to assist youth with mental health concerns." And now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize NAMI Youth Mental Health Conference and honor NAMI Keystone, Pennsylvania for their dedication to building better lives for the millions of Americans affected by mental health illness through education, support, advocacy, awareness, and their valiant work on behalf of youth. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, February 7th, 2025 to be NAMI Keystone, Pennsylvania Youth Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
I would like to invite Chris up. She is the CEO of NAMI Keystone, and I want to thank you again for being here. And anybody else that has a few words to say afterwards, you're welcome, so.
I just want to thank the council and the cosponsors of this proclamation and Councilman Coghill for recognizing the youth conference that we are having. It's at the Weston in Pittsburgh. We're expecting an attendance of over 500 people. And it is, we have 17 school districts, almost as many universities. People coming from all over the country come to Pittsburgh for this conference. Eleven different states, I believe, right now. And we're really proud to have it in the City of Pittsburgh. And for it to be recognized by council is going to give us a real boost, be able to market that and publicize that. So, thank you so much.
Could I ask members that are here to come up and get in the picture with us? And, you know, I also wanted to mention, they actually go into high schools. So, you know, I love the fact that you're getting to the real youth, 10, 12, 14-year-old kids, which is...
Four-year-olds.
Yep.
And now if Mr. and Mrs. Baldwin would please come forward? James, you could certainly come forward as well. You put this in motion.
This way, Mr. Baldwin.
Yeah, I'm a...
You're welcome.
My face is best in a perfect scene.
Yes, I remember that.
Yeah, I'm Jim. Welcome.
Nice to meet you.
Very nice to meet you.
All right. So, prior to reading the proclamation, I'll simply say it's truly an honor to be able to present them with the proclamations. Both Mr. and Mrs. Justice Baldwin have had distinguished careers. And as they both turn 80, we wanted to take a moment to celebrate their life achievements. Not only the work that they have done that's been critical to the city, but also to the state. And even, as I got to learn this morning, even internationally, the work that they're doing. So, we just want to thank them for all the work that they're doing and celebrate their life's achievements. And I'll begin with Justice Baldwin. "Whereas the Honorable Justice Cynthia A. Baldwin, a trailblazer in the field and an exemplary leader in her community, is celebrating her 80th birthday, and it is fitting that we acknowledge her numerous contributions and celebrate her remarkable achievements. Whereas Justice Baldwin made history as the first African-American woman elected to the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas and only the third African-American and second African-American woman to serve on the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, where she served with distinction until her retirement in 2008. Whereas a passionate advocate for education, Justice Baldwin's journey began as a teacher in the McKeesport Area School District, where she and her husband founded a not-for-profit counseling and tutorial service for underserved young people. She later obtained her law degree from Duquesne University School of Law, where she graduated on law review. Whereas Justice Baldwin's leadership extends to her service on numerous boards and organizations, including the Fulbright Association, the Association of Governing Boards of Colleges and Universities, Duquesne University, the Pittsburgh Urban League, the United Way, and the Pennsylvania State University Board of Trustees, where she was the first person of color and the first woman to serve as the chair. Whereas she has earned recognition for her dedication to improving her community and mentoring future generations, receiving numerous honors, including the Athea Award, the Heinz History Center History Maker Award, the Pennsylvania Bar Association's A. Leon Higginbotham? I hope I said that right? Award? Higginbotham, excuse me. And the Women and Girls Foundation Art of Justice Award. Whereas Justice Baldwin continues to inspire others through her work as a mentor, speaker, and community leader, striving to make a positive difference both locally and globally, as exemplified by her work in Uganda and Zimbabwe, her involvement with the International Women's Forum, and her presentations at conferences around the world. And now therefore be resolved that the Pittsburgh City Council and the citizens of Pittsburgh join in celebrating her 80th birthday of the Honorable Justice Cynthia A. Baldwin and honor her lifelong commitment to justice, education, leadership, and public service. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, February 8th, 2025 as Justice Cynthia A. Baldwin Day in the City of Pittsburgh. May we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. What I would like to do is read Mr. Baldwin's, and then I'll turn it over to both of them to give remarks. "Whereas Arthur L. Baldwin, a distinguished alumni of Penn State University, is celebrating his 80th birthday, and it is fitting that we honor his exceptional career and contributions to the fields of science, engineering, and public service. Whereas Mr. Baldwin has over 35 years of experience across governmental, industry, and academia, and is a senior-level official at the National Energy Technology Laboratory of the United States Department of Energy, where he leads projects in coal and gas, renewable energy, carbon capture, and storage, and plays a key role in developing strategic initiatives that strengthen regional capabilities. And whereas Baldwin's outstanding work has earned him numerous honors, including the Defensive Energy Service to Society Award as part of the President's 1,000 Points of Light Program, the Federal Executive Board's Equal Employment Opportunity Award, and multiple nominations for the American Institute of Chemical Engineers Service to Society Award. Whereas Baldwin has demonstrated a lifelong commitment to community service, serving on various boards and committees, including the Pennsylvania Commission on Aging, the Heinz History Center Board of Directors, and the McKeesport Counseling and Tutoring Service, a nonprofit organization he co-founded to support minority and disadvantaged students. Whereas Baldwin's educational background includes a master's degree in organic chemistry from the University of Pittsburgh, a bachelor's degree in microbiology with a minor in chemistry from Penn State University, and extensive coursework towards a PhD and MBA showcasing his dedication to lifelong learning and academic achievement. And now therefore be it resolved that the Pittsburgh City Council and citizens of Pittsburgh join in celebrating the 80th birthday of Arthur L. Baldwin, recognizing his lifelong contributions to the scientific community, his leadership in public service, and his tireless dedication to bettering the lives of others through education, mentorship, and community involvement. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, February 8th, as Arthur L. Baldwin Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And may we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Oh, how cute.
I am most appreciative for this. Those "whereas's" were very long because I'm old. My husband likes to say that I used to be successful, but I failed retirement three times. And I'll continue to fail retirement because I will continue to work for the community. I think that's why we were all put on this earth, to do something. My mother used to say, "We all say somebody ought to do something and forget that we are somebody." So, because I am still somebody, I will continue to work to make our communities the best that they can be. Thank you so very much.
It's always hard to follow Cynthia. To be honest with you, I was very surprised to find out that we were going to be honored. Our son, James, surprised us in his discussion with the councilman. I remember this young man when he was young, younger. And his family, his father and his grandfather, just great people. Likewise, remember this young man as well. It's really quite an honor to just stand here. Pittsburgh is very important to us, has been, is now, always will be. And I agree with my wife. God put us here to help people. That's why we're here. When we get up in the morning, the first thing we do, we ask God, "What do you want us to do for people today?" It may be small. I know, just being around her, this... My wife is just, I look, she's just unreal. We've both been blessed, and God expects us to bless others. That's important. That's what we say every day. And again, thank you so much. Thank you, Councilman. Yes, please do. Come back.
Thank you, Councilman Lavell.
And with that, our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may be before City Council. Perfanny will not be permitted. After you are called, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller Homewood, and I'm Jamie Niger. In the early 2000s, I became a member of the African Studies Association and the Modern Language Association. I'm the creator of African Intelligence Month 2010. This is 2025 for February. African, not genetic race, but cultural, region-based intelligence is the core for African intelligence. It is linguistics. There are more than 3,000 languages in Africa, which is unparalleled across the world. A council concern is the neighborhood. This is consistent with my Global Intelligence Society President 2028 Initiative 5 to create a nationwide network, neighborhood network. I urge this council to establish elected neighborhood councils. I have done so in the past. And to engage Lagos, Nigeria, LN, as a Pittsburgh ally. I'm doing so via my Global Information Intelligence Network.net website. Benjamin Adatoleza, webmaster and web consultant. He's from Nigeria. USA-Nigeria comparison contrast. USA population estimate 2024, 330 million. Nigeria, 290 million. USA Pittsburgh population estimate 2024, 300,000. Lagos in Nigeria, 20 million. USA Pittsburgh median population age is 38-plus. Here is older. Nigeria and Lagos, 18. USA and Pittsburgh primary language is one. Nigeria and Lagos, three. USA and Pittsburgh languages, not more than 50, but Nigeria and Lagos, more than 500. Pittsburgh neighborhoods, 90. Lagos, 900. Lagos, Nigeria, LN, has 20 local government areas, which are like districts. Here, there are nine. One of these in Lagos is Alamosha. Here is District 6. Alamosha, 3 million population, six subdivisions called local community development areas. Do we have such a thing here in District 6, Mr. Lavell? Within Alamosha, there are more than 50 neighborhoods per LCDA, so there are more than 300 neighborhoods. The local government head is Mr. Souleman. These people are connected via Yorobo. Yorobo. And there are 15 variants, 15 dialects, and they do it street by street. This is very similar to what happens in the hill between Wiley and Kirkpatrick and Center and Kirkpatrick, very different language functions.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joseph Griffo.
Good morning. Joseph Griffo, Pleasant Hills. And I speak with all due respect, but I'm speaking to the refusal of the mayor from cooperating with Immigration and Customs Enforcement. And I do want to say from the article, Trib Live, January 27, 2025, where the mayor states openly that, quote, "My administration will do whatever necessary to make our city welcoming," and then goes on to say, "That's what we're built on," end quote. If that means allowing undocumented, unvetted, illegal aliens to take residence in our city and our counties, then it's not what we're built on. In fact, it's a clear violation and dereliction of your sworn duty to uphold and enforce duly passed laws, including those regarding immigration. You're welcoming known lawbreakers. I know that sounds harsh, but it's true. A fact attested to by their willful, unlawful entrance into our country, state, county, and city. They receive tremendous benefits from those who have and do follow prescribed laws, who pay their taxes, who contribute constructively to society, who take a great, great measure of pride in their city and communities. The city was built on people who came to this country with honor, dignity, and integrity, who, like my family that immigrated in the early 1960s from Italy and settled in East Liberty, went through the process. They left. My parents were separated for a year because my dad had to wait. Yet it was the right thing to do, and it was well worth the privilege of attaining legal citizenship. Like many other immigrant communities, they worked hard, honest, assimilating with dignity, thankful for opportunities to this nation as a free republic. They resisted government handouts, choosing instead to rely on hard work and a hand up from those willing to help them. They felt ownership. They were interested in their families and their communities. And that, sir, is what this city was built on. Law, order, honesty, integrity, and hard work. From steelworkers to coal miners, business owners to bankers. And we expect, and I think we have the right to demand from our elected city officials, that you do the duty and obligation of upholding the law actively and not simply allowing it to go this way. The US immigration laws are not unjust. They're not unfair, and they're not unrighteous. Our nation has brought more people in than most, if not all, other countries. Most people desire to come here legally, not only for the opportunities to prosper, but also precisely because we are a land of law and order, unlike so many other nations that are steeped in corruption, lawlessness, partiality, oppressive statutes and ordinances. The stance being taken here is not noble. It's not truly, truly compassionate, and it's just not just. Please reconsider this stance that is antithetical to your calling, to your office, and service to the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chad Ringbloom.
Good morning. My name is Chad Ringbloom. I'm from Brentwood. I'm also here to speak on the issues. I mean, we see the things going on in this country. They're moving along pretty fast and furious, and there's some controversy here and there. But one of the things that I do believe is just is the removal of illegal aliens who are violent criminals. And again, I have to stand against, I'm actually here to applaud you because I believe that I read that you haven't passed any ordinance that would declare Pittsburgh a sanctuary city for illegal immigration. I applaud you for that. I'm actually pleasantly surprised. But again, like my brother said regarding Mayor Ganey, and we will do whatever's necessary to make our city more welcoming. That's what we're built on. I have to ask this question. More welcoming to whom? Certainly not people like Lake and Riley who were murdered at the hands of illegal aliens. Certainly not at the hands of the woman in Boston who was violently raped by an illegal alien with a gun in her mouth. And you go even further than that. And this isn't even about illegal immigration. It's certainly not welcoming to Benjamin Bralier, who was murdered at the hands of a transgender who was charged with assault and released without bail by a Pittsburgh district judge. See, this is the problem with lawlessness. When you decide in a country that you won't obey, you won't go along with the laws that are necessary because you don't, that are written because you don't agree with them, is that you create an atmosphere where no law matters. If you disagree with it, why obey it? It's absurd. And that's what I see here. And it's not just borne out in philosophy or experience. It's borne out in the Word of God. In Ecclesiastes, it says, "Because the sentence against an evil deed is not executed speedily, the heart of the children of man is fully set to do evil." I would encourage you to repudiate the policy of our mayor regarding illegal immigration because you show no mercy to the law-abiding citizens by rejecting a just order from the greater magistrate. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Abigail Wong.
Hello there. I just wanted to state a public comment about ordinance 1425. I applaud that it prohibits discrimination based on race, religion, gender identity, and national origin. I'm just disappointed that the main intent of this bill is not to prevent discrimination against marginalized people, but to shut down our attempts at direct democracy with not on our dime. Last summer, we got over 12,000 signatures, many of whom are Jewish constituents themselves, supporting our campaign. We've got around 10,000 in our second campaign. 10,000! We just want the general Pittsburgh public to have a say on this. And having the people in power in the city council attempt to shut down this attempt at direct democracy, it kind of seems like a bad look. So, with the experience gained from our campaign, we want to make it easier for other people to start referendum campaigns on their own and participate more in city and local politics. And on behalf of Not on Our Dime, I'd like to say that we are firmly against discrimination based on religion, ethnicity, or national origin. When we say that our end goal is to end military aid to Israel, we are arguing for it because Israel as a state, not as a group of people, is committing genocide. It's really easy to search online and find statements from top Israeli officials, like the Minister of Defense, stating genocidal attempt against Palestinians, fighting human animals, making Gaza a slaughterhouse, erasing Gaza stripped from the face of the earth. They recently banned humanitarian aid towards people in Gaza during the ceasefire. We just want for financial transparency about what contract the City of Pittsburgh signs when it comes to defense technology, drones, AI surveillance, even the chiro's and parts used to build F-35, and encourage Pittsburgh to spend that money on more community efforts, improving housing and providing better public education. More financial transparency means that we have more trust between the city council, all forms of government, and the people. And I just wanted to address Councilmember Strasburger directly. Hello, I'm a student living in Oakland. I'd like to ask you to listen to more of your student constituents who are really passionate about opposing genocide against Palestinians and support this campaign while protecting people against antisemitism here and white supremacy. Students, first of all, Jewish Voice for Peace is a pretty well-known organization here. They endorse Not on Our Dime, and I encourage her to reach out to them about the thoughts about Not on Our Dime to get some diverse opinions within the Jewish community. community. Spirits for Justice in Palestine also has many Jewish members that you can talk to. Um, they can give you, like, really thoughtful comments about how to both protect Jews within Pittsburgh and also make sure that we are more transparent and more hold accountable with our funding. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts all listed, uh, registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name or neighborhood for the record. You'll also be given three minutes to speak. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to speak?
Hi, I'm Bernadette from Beachview. I was gonna talk about something that I will say that, um, I love our Latino community in Beachview. They saved us from a debunked, non-properly-vetted developer, Bernie Katz. And it continues to be the second safest community in the city, and I'm proud of that. I will take twenty legal or illegal immigrants as my neighbors before I take the non-hardworking people who came here illegally. Let's face it, we are illegal. Anyway, the vetting process. I emailed a couple of you, and I'm very concerned, number one, that the Beachview Historical Society has not been, has, has not been consulted or not consulted, I don't know what the word is, hasn't been brought into this. The, the person who answered the RFP, my other hometown, Mill Creek, Pennsylvania, went in there and completely ignored all of the history that was up there, and everything's just been demolished, open for the developers. And I know, I, I've said this before, you have to vet who you're handing out. This person used to work under the Murphy administration in the planning, and so this person knows how to write the, and answer an RFP and get that contract. How do you, how do you leave the city planning and then just keep coming back and getting ten thousand dollars a pop? Mill Creek, she got five thousand. Sorry, but you guys paid double what she, that she got paid, and she just got paid in the fall around the same time. But my problem is, who's at home with her who then comes in and has been getting a whole bunch of zoning changes? If that's not a conflict of interest, I'm telling you right now, people are not vetting what, who you're contracting out to. I have gotten so many different answers. Oh, it was, it was started by the, the state historical, whatever it is. I called him yesterday. No, they didn't. They had no idea what I was talking about. Somebody initiated that. And if this lady does not meet with the Historical Society, how do you do a historical review and not meet with the Historical Society that just got a major grant, by the way? So we're not a little small potatoes Historical Society. All I'm asking is that you guys get a little bit more careful as to who, and bring everyone to the table. This is our community.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
I didn't sign up, but I guess you said anyone could speak. So this is, should I do something for the three minutes?
Just provide your name and neighborhood for the record.
Uh, Margaret Fisher, and I'm in Squirrel Hill, and I'm actually speaking to thank the mayor for protecting immigrants, especially legal immigrants. I have friends from Venezuela who came here legally, and the Trump administration is, has said that they're going to change their minds and send them back even though they came here legally. I also am terrified every time my daughter walks out the door. My daughter, we adopted from Guatemala, she's a U.S. citizen. She cannot leave the house anymore without carrying her passport. She's on Find My iPhone, and she does not like her mom knowing where she is all the time because she's twenty-four, but I want her to have it on in case she illegally gets arrested by ICE just because of what she looks like. So thank you, mayor, for protecting my daughter.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at K, I live at seven fifteen Mercer Street. That's K D where it's tires. Um, as I heard on the news, it said that the mayor's chief of staff, Wiggly, will be leaving. And Mr. Wiggly and the mayor's staff, if you're looking, good riddance. When I asked you years ago, Wiggly, to help us get a bus from the top of Mercer, top of Beffer down to Fifth Avenue, there's a senior citizen building where I live, a hundred and ninety apartments. We must go through town to be able to hit you to hospital at the bottom of the hill. And when I, when the mayor came to our building, and I said, "Oh, mayor, we still don't have a bus," that's county, when as he had his campaign manager, she came and pushed him away. He smiled. Now, when I see him the next day, I said, "Mayor, much, when much is given to you, much is expected." When the, when she pushed you away from me, he said, "But that was her, her," I said, "But you could have said, 'Ms. Brown, so-and-so.'" But, um, I want you to understand, when they just said that the mayor helped you, helped this lady with, um, this, helped, well, the mayor was supposed to have done something, welcomed him, but he don't welcome black people, because he didn't welcome me. When I said, "Mayor, I asked to see you," I told you, any, I'm here Tuesday or Wednesday, but any day. Every time I go, his secretary would tell me, "Well, the mayor hasn't," so when I see him, and he says, "Uh-huh." But, I mean, you must understand, I've been trying to come down here in a calm manner, but it's hard when I deal with a mayor that acts like a buffoon screaming and holler. What's, what's, I, I mean, come on now. I, you know what? I've been coming down here for years, and it's hard coming down here. I walk most of the time. I'm cold, and I'm coming to tell you, please listen to us. Wiggly's gone, he's just shit, because he knows there's writing, there's writing on the wall. And for the mayor to say how he welcomed people, and I can't get welcomed, I can't get a meeting with him, I, all I ask, I says, "Please, can I have a meeting with you?" I can't get a meeting, but he bring these football players in there, him and hauling about football. Ask them what their grades are in school. Are they gonna be able to go to college, or are they gonna be, just have a ball? Because he, him and a hauling. You must understand, I'm upset with the mayor because he's acting like a buffoon. You know what, someone stupid. Anytime I try to ask him, "Please explain to me what you're doing." I don't want to take and talk bad about you, but he needs to be gone. And I think we're gonna get a new mayor. I, myself, people are saying it's gonna be Cory. It might be, but he does give us more respect than what our, our mayor does here.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Special Agent Sunshine. I return to sender Nevedu Hex's curse sent towards me one hundred million billion trillion googlex, and whoever's sending it, Lord, throw them in like a fire. Thank you, Lord, for using me as a vessel to do your will, not mine. Psalm ninety-one, verse five through eight says, "You will not fear the terror of night, nor arrow that flies by day, nor the pestilence that stalks in the darkness, nor the plague that destroys at midday. A thousand may fall at your side, ten thousand at your right hand, but it will not come near you. You will only observe with your eyes and see the punishment of the wicked." The punishment of the wicked that I discovered this week, last week, Friday at Second Avenue Overflow Shelter, there was a man doing this right here. I, I have to show you because this, he, listen, if any of you have had bedbugs, they are nothing to play with. I'm gonna emphasize and tell you what the word pestilence means. It's a fatal epidemic disease. Plague, the definition for plague is an instrument of God's wrath, a punishment for unrighteousness. An example of this is the tumors that were among the Philistines after capture of the Ark of the Covenant. And epidemic is a widespread disease. Now, the problem with bedbugs are, you have to get rid of everything. There's five floors in Second Avenue Overflow Shelter. When I alerted security, staff, and at least five or six people that live there about this, before I left, I left. You have to get rid of everything. I left Friday. Now, there's still people in that building, so that means they're still there. They're on people's bodies and their clothes. That's how they travel. They hide. But as long as there's a food supply, they're gonna multiply. So that's the problem. Now, when people leave that building with bedbugs on them, on their bodies and on their clothes, wherever they go, they go. So this is the instrument of God's wrath and His punishment for unrighteousness right here in this building. This is the destruction that I've been screaming about, letting you know that everybody's destruction is not the same. Now, this is yours. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Sharla, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning. And Councilman Calkill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
No new papers, Mr. President.
And Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs. He also has no papers.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. And then Councilwoman Kell Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill fourteen fifty-nine, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Kittleson LLC for expert witness services in connection with a litigation matter filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas for an amount not to exceed eight thousand seventy-one dollars and twenty-five cents over one year. Bill fourteen sixty, resolution authorizing the issuance of three warrants in, with the total sum of two hundred forty-eight thousand one dollar over one year. It is further understood and agreed that the payment schedule of the total settlement amount shall be as follows: one hundred thousand, one hundred thousand and one dollar payable to Michael Zakatis and his attorney Wendy Williams Esquire; seventy thousand dollars payable to Martin A. Dietz Esquire; seventy-eight thousand dollars payable to Bruce Thomas and his attorney Noah Geary Esquire in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the United States District Court for the Western District Court of Pennsylvania. Bill fourteen sixty-one, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant payable in favor of National League of Cities for a, for one year membership dues in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand fifty-four dollars. Bill fourteen sixty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh for professional services relating to eviction prevention for tenants at a cost not to exceed two million dollars over one year. And Bill fourteen sixty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and the city controller to enter into a professional service agreement and/or contract with the Binkley Canovee Group LLC for services associated with the popular annual financial report, including accounting services, production, printing, and mailing, cost not to exceed forty thousand three hundred dollars over a term of two years.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents Bill fourteen sixty-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and the directors of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to execute a declaration of restrictions and covenants in a, a pertinent documents in cooperation with the University of Pittsburgh over certain property and right of way in the vicinity of Bigelow Boulevard between Fifth Avenue and Forbes Avenue within the city of Pittsburgh as a condition of an NPDES permit granted in conjunction with street and property improvements in the area at no cost to the city. And Bill fourteen sixty-five, resolution providing for an amended agreement for construction services with SET Inc. for the South Side Signals Project at a cost thereof not to exceed three million eight hundred twenty-two thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars and ninety-six cents, an increase of five hundred forty-two thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars and ninety-six cents from the previously legislated contract authorization.
And Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Bobby Wilson presents Bill fourteen sixty-six, resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with Paramount Pursuits LLC for technical assistance services to nonprofits awarded neighborhood economic development grants in need of capacity building in the amount not to exceed forty-one thousand dollars.
Thank you. And for myself, if we could begin with the three appointments.
Councilman Or Daniel Lovell presents Bill fourteen sixty-seven, resolution appointment of Rachel Shepard as a member of the Gender Equity Commission with a term to expire February first, two thousand twenty-eight. Bill fourteen sixty-eight, resolution appointment of Devon Taliya Pharoah as a member of the Gender Equity Commission with a term to expire February first, two thousand twenty-eight. Bill fourteen sixty-nine, resolution appointment of Avery Hart as a member of the Gender Equity Commission with a term to expire February first, two thousand twenty-eight.
And we need a motion to interview or to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All three appointments have been appu, approved. Now we need, if you could read the four communications.
Bill fourteen seventy, communication from Jake Pollock, Director of Office of Management and Budget, submitting to city council the attached status update from the Grants Office for the week ended January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Bill fourteen seventy-one, communication from Jake Pollock, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay requests on behalf of the mayor's office for Paul Scott and Sidney Cooper, the Department of Public Works for Raymond Gilbert and Robert E. Sapp III, and the Department of Public Safety for Donna Harper per the acting pay policy revised in June two thousand eighteen. Bill fourteen seventy-two, communication from Rachel Heisler, City Controller, submitting a performance audit of the Department of Public Safety's Bureau of Administration, Office of Film and Event Management, Special Events, as conducted pursuant to the power and duties of the Controller under Section four oh four B of the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter. And Bill fourteen seventy-five, communication from Felicity Williams, Deputy Chair, Chief of Staff, submitting the Equal Opportunity Review Commission Quarterly Report for the period ended December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
And can we have a motion to re-receiving file?
Just, just a brief comment. Do we get an, um, explanation as to why the acting pay, some, these employees are receiving acting pay? Because there's one on here that I have some questions about. I don't want to talk about it now. I'm just wondering, do we get an explanation?
Yeah.
Okay. I would like to see that. Thank you. I'll make sure I look.
We need a second on the motion to re-receiving file.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All four will be re-receiving filed. Now I'll follow up with Councilwoman Smith. Um, now if we could read the sponsor legislation.
Bill fourteen seventy-three, resolution authorizing an extension of the of the Term of the Acting Chief of Police for 30 additional days effective January 31st, 2025.
And we need a motion to approve.
A move.
Second.
Second. And maybe we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Charlin? Mr. Coghill?
This is for a one-month extension, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley? Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you very much. The legislation has been approved.
Just a point of clarification.
Yes, sir.
So, we don't have to interview for this additional 30-day extension? Is that right? Is this is to avoid doing the interview?
No, we will have to interview if and when he is actually sent over to be confirmed as our permanent chief. Right now, he's acting as interim. And so, we extended that because the deadline came up last week.
Isn't the rule that within 90 days, we have to do the interview? So, we're by doing this, we're essentially waiving our process or waiving our rules?
No. Council has the ability to extend it. Under, just as an example, actually, under our last chief, he was extended for months because the administration was doing the national search. They have not sent over who they're proposing to be the permanent chief. Once they do, we will absolutely have the interview.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
With that, our next order of business is reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger presenting the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill 1453, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for January 29th, 2025 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1407, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in favor of Mary Ann Stang and her attorneys Ainsman Levine LLC for a single payment in 2025 in an amount not to exceed $10,000 in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 1408, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in favor of Noel Phillips and her attorneys Mills &amp; Henry Attorney at Law for a single payment in 2025 in an amount not to exceed $20,000 in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas and for acquisition of the parcel identified as 5166 Broad Street. Bill 1424, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 293 of 2024, which authorized the Mayor and the Director of City Planning to enter into a professional services agreement with Bromberg &amp; Associates LLC for effective communication services by exercising the contract option to extend the term for one year and by increasing the total spend by $150,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $623, sorry, $628,976. Bill 1425, Ordinance Directing the Allegheny County Board of Elections to place before the qualified voters of the City of Pittsburgh at the 2025 May primary election a referendum question. Shall the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter, Article I, Home Rule Powers Definitions, be supplemented by adding a new Section 105 Local Governance by prohibiting the discrimination on the basis of race, religion, ancestry, sex, sexual orientation, age, gender identity, or expression, disability, place of birth, national origin or association or affiliation with any nation or foreign state in conducting business of the city? Bill 1426, Ordinance Directing the Allegheny County Board of Elections to place before the qualified voters of the City of Pittsburgh at the 2025 May primary election a referendum question. Shall the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter, Article I, Home Rule Powers Definitions, be supplemented by adding a new Section 104 Amendments to Charter by prohibiting the use of the Home Rule Charter Amendment Process to add duties or obligations beyond the lawful scope of the city's authority? Bill 1452, Ordinance Entitled, Directing the Allegheny County Board of Elections to place before the qualified voters of the City of Pittsburgh at the 2025 May primary election a referendum question. Shall the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter be amended and supplemented by adding a new Article 11, right to public ownership of potable water systems, wastewater system, and storm sewer systems, which restricts the lease and/or sale of the city's water and sewer system to private entities?
You've heard the reading entitled the bills or any discussion?
Just.
Councilman Charlin?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have a question here. With the water referendum, and maybe this might be a better question for the bill sponsor, why is it that we can't do that legislatively?
Am I doing interrogatory? What's happening here? Okay, sorry. So, I believe that, and I'm not a lawyer, so we might want to bring this listener to the table, right? That what I've been told is that when we pass an ordinance, like we can't, just like we can't regulate business, right? It would only apply to the assets that we actually have. But because the Home Rule Charter is the power of all of the citizens, right? It gives them the kind of legal grounds to pursue. So, there is an example in another home rule municipality in Pennsylvania that is very recent where its city, well, its supervisors, it's a township, but it's our home rule township in Pennsylvania. Its city council voted to sell its water system. And the citizens got mad. And so, they circulated a petition to put a very similar amendment on their home rule charter. And it succeeded. And then, the citizens had grounds to sue and stop the sale. And then, its board of supervisors reversed its vote. So, I think this is mostly true of what is in home rule charters. And then, also, if the citizens pass this, then it also, I think, can put conditions on what the administration and the city council will do even in the if-if and when PWSA exercises its $1 option to purchase the water system in September. So, I think this is both the right time. And again, we, all we can do is put this on the ballot. It is up to the people. I believe that, again, people have made their wishes clear over and over every time we have a crisis with the water system in the City of Pittsburgh, that they value and want the ownership of the system to remain public. And that by having it being publicly owned in the past, we have been able to solve crises more quickly. So, I think that, again, all city council has the power to do is actually put this on the ballot for citizens to vote on in May.
If I may, what if it's voted down? Does that, I mean, what happens if?
Then, we would be in the same position that we're in today.
Okay. I mean, I am curious, especially with our second-class city law, our corporate powers under Section 2. It says here, it essentially protects us, requires us to allow ourselves to be able to sell off parts of ourselves. It says that every city of the second class within this Commonwealth is hereby declared to be a, or should have, sorry. I'm reading the wrong section here. But we are required under our second-class city law from Harrisburg to be able to sell off parts of ourselves. And I'm curious how, have we vetted this with law?
Yeah. So, both our lawyers, PWSA lawyers, and I think maybe even some other citizen lawyers have all worked on this extensively.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, it seems like a very simple, here's what I'm looking, uh... Yeah. We are required to be able to sell off our property here. I'm just, I'm curious if someone can make that make sense to me. So, that's all I've got.
Thank you. I'll just say, we currently don't own the asset. So, we're actually not selling it off.
But this, this would require us to not be able to sell it off, which is something that we have to maintain the ability to do as a second-class city.
This would say this is the will of the people to never do this. It doesn't guarantee it could never occur.
Okay.
Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. I just want to thank Councilwoman Gross. But I do want to say, you know, I struggle with this issue because we've had so many people calling us about their utility bills, especially their water bills where they're, you know, paying $600 a month and $400 for rent, $600 for a water bill. And so, there seems to be that the real oversight, I think, needs to be with the PUC, that we need to address what's happening there, that the rates are continually approved, you know, and our residents are struggling with all utilities. And I do want to say that the Senate this past week approved some help and some relief for utility, you know, rate payers. And they're going to, it's now going to the House. So, hopefully, they'll pass that. So, people can't shut off the utilities in the, you know, cold temperatures, below a certain temperature or above a certain temperature. And so, that they'll have those opportunities, you know, for the inability to pay or for health reasons. Well, they've always had some of those things in place. But this will, this will be more, solidify this across for all utilities. But we also have, my concern is that the people are so uninformed because we're not, we're even discussing here the responsibilities and, you know, what we can and cannot do. So, for me overall, I just, I'm not sure whether privatization of the utility company is such a bad thing because in my district, we have three different utility companies for the water, three different water companies. We have PA American, PWSA, and Westview Water in District 2. And they get great public service from some of those places, and they get a lot of help. So, I don't want to say that they're not doing what's right. I think they, it makes it also a little bit more competitive. I would like to see us, I'm seeing that there's a lot of increase in salaries at PWSA. And I think those are things that we also need to be addressing. Although, overall, we saw when our water company was managed by a private company, and we had a lot of issues. And it was something that the Women's Caucus had at the time looked into. So, I, although I have a lot of mixed feelings, I'm glad Councilwoman Gross is moving forward with this. But I really do think it actually mirrored a lot, a lot longer conversation and more from law to understand what exactly, you know, this can or cannot do. But I'm supportive today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just for the record, it's, sorry. It, it's under our corporate powers. It's Section 2, and it's subsection 3 that says that we must perpetually have the ability to sell off any real or personal property.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you. So, the 1995 asset transfer agreement is already done. What is happening later this year is the actual final negotiations that are ongoing between the city and Pittsburgh Water. And then, the final actual asset transfer will happen later this year. Out of an abundance of caution, despite the fact that there was already going to be likely language inserted into that asset transfer agreement to further solidify it, you know, at no point will this be transferred over to private ownership or management. This will solidify that into the future. And so, it's Pittsburgh Water who is going to be, who is going to own the assets, not the city. So, that kind of changes things here. But it was to insert that language and ensure that that was kind of there in perpetuity into the future. So, that's one point. The second point is that, again, out of an abundance of caution, the lawyers who came together around this referendum bill inserted language to ensure that if there is an extraordinary need to, you know, take a tiny subset of the system for the purposes of making, you know, a building, a development happen, and there needed to be, you know, somehow, private ownership of a portion of the system, a small portion of a sewer line or this or that, because it was necessary for an unforeseen circumstance. That language is inserted as a relief valve to allow for that to happen. So, there's nothing preventing kind of some flexibility within the parameters of this law, even should it go, get onto the ballot and then be voted in the affirmative by voters.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill? Vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Aye.
Mr. Charlin? Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye on all bills but no on 1426.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
And a final vote.
On final vote, an abstention is, clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, but an extension is effectively written down as a no vote.
That's fine. That's fine. So, if I, can I?
If you abstain, it'll be recorded as a no vote on final vote.
Oh, sorry. Just so, just to, just to clarify, as I said at the public hearing yesterday, my concern with this, of course, you know, on the surface, council should not be obligated to do things beyond the legal scope of its authority. But what concerns me at this particular moment in time with what we are seeing in Washington, I have concerns that in the future, we may see a federal government or even a state government. We can't, you know, we can't foresee that. But that could actually outlaw the type of anti-discrimination bill that we're voting on in 1425. And so, given that climate that we are in right now, and it may sound paranoid, but I don't think that it is. It's quite alarming what we're seeing at the moment in Washington. I, you know, I have concerns about really doing anything at all that sort of hamstrings the, the, the power of the people of Pittsburgh to exercise their, their ability to participate in the democratic process as, as laid out in our, you know, in our home rule charter and such. So, that's, that's my, my thought on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, President?
Aye.
On bills 1407, 1408, 1424, 1425, and 1452, eight ayes. And on bill 1426, six ayes, two noes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. And that takes us to Councilman Anthony Coghill presenting the Committee of Public Safety and Wellness.
Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill 1452, or 1454, Report of the Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for January 29th, 2025 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1423, Resolution Amending and Supplementing the Rules of Council by Adding Rule 13 Hearings for by adding Rule Thirteen, Hearings for Appointments of Heads of Administrative Units.
You've heard the reading and it's out of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, presenting the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents Bill fourteen fifty-five, Report of the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill fourteen eleven, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Tool Design LLC for costs associated with the West Pittsburgh Reach Neighborhood Mobility Plan and providing for the payment of costs thereof not to exceed one hundred four thousand two hundred seventy-four dollars. And Bill fourteen thirteen, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a supplemental agreement or agreements with CDR McGuire, Inc. for project design management services and reviews in connection with various City of Pittsburgh projects to add funding for the preliminary engineering phase, increasing the total not to exceed to three million seven hun- seven hundred eleven, seven hundred eleven thousand two hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. A net increase of zero dollars reimbursable at ninety-five percent.
You've heard the reading and it's out of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally, and that takes us to Councilperson Robert Sharlin, presenting the Committee of Human Resources.
Thank you.
Councilperson Robert Sharlin presents Bill fourteen fifty-six, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill fourteen forty, I'm sorry, eleven forty-one, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Department of Human Resources and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into an agreement or agreements with the County of Allegheny to support children, youth, and family programs administered by the Department of Human Services at a cost not to exceed four million two hundred thousand dollars for a one-year pilot agreement.
You've heard the reading and it's out of the bill. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Smith.
I just, um, want to mention that I hope that some of these programs include working with kids that are getting into trouble. We, we've had eleven kids living in one household, well, not living, staying and coming and going at one household in Sheridan, who stole ninety guns.
Yep.
Um, over the past few, few months. And over the past year, uh, uh, last year, I believe they stole guns from Erie. And these kids are living in a house and they're eleven, I think they're twelve to fifteen years old. And somebody, when I see all these programs that are supposed to be doing things to keep kids off the street and, and safe and, and I'm wondering what, how these kids have fallen through the cracks. I've called Cornell Jones, asked him to go meet with the families. I've asked them to bring Sister Mary in, to bring some parenting programs in. I've asked, um, the commander to make sure that he bought the other resources in. I called DHS, or OCHS, I'm sorry, to see if they would work with the families. And I'm just saying that all this, these things are supposed to be help, happening and helping. There's no reason kids are stealing guns like this repeatedly on the streets, and now there's ninety guns on the streets of Sheridan. And the ATF came in and took some off, but they don't make arrests of young people. We obviously aren't making arrests of young people. And somehow, I think it's the adults making kids do all this stuff in the city and across different places, because the adults won't be punished as severely as, as a child, you know, the, the party, I'm sorry, the child won't be punished as severely as the adult. So they're using kids for, to do these and commit these crimes. And yet somehow, all these efforts, and all this money, and all the stop the violence and everything that we have, this is still all going on, and with almost absolutely no response. So I hope if we're putting more money into some of this stuff, I hope that they're putting some focus on partnering with all those different groups and bringing some real results to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally, and that takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, presenting the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill fourteen fifty-seven, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill fourteen oh six, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight sixty-three of two thousand eighteen, effective January first, two thousand nineteen, as amended, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand Nineteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand Nineteen Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving the Two Thousand Seventeen through Two Thousand Twenty-Two Capital Improvement Program by reducing the open door by eight thousand five hundred dollars and increasing Crafton Heights United Presbyterian Church Doing Business as the Open Door Youth Outreach by eight thousand five hundred dollars and authorize subsequent agreements. Bill fourteen fourteen, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Clio Consulting for an historic survey of the Beachview District and related costs in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Bill fourteen fifteen, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement or agreements with Ground Technology, Inc., Doing Business as Diapolonia, Diapolonia Geotech, Geotechnical Professional Service that include assessments, evaluations, land remediation plans, and expert testimony of properties subject to active life safety code enforcement violations for a total cost not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars over three years. And Bill fourteen sixteen, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections for the issuance of a warrant in favor of the International Code Council, I, I see, ICC, for the purchase of Two Thousand Twenty-One ICC Building Code books for building code officers and officials at a cost not to exceed forty thousand fifty-eight dollars and ninety cents.
You've heard the reading and it's out of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. And finally, Councilman Kahori Mosley, presenting the Committee of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs. Councilwoman Gross for Councilman Mosley.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Kahori Mosley presents Bill fourteen fifty-eight, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill fourteen oh four, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for twenty-three ten West Liberty Avenue, Pittsburgh one five two two six, at no cost to the city.
You've heard the reading and it's out of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions, and Councilwoman Warwick?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, so I'd like to just start by saying, you know, there are many ways for our residents to participate in our local democracy. Um, they can collect signatures for ballot referendums, they can collect signatures for candidates. They can testify at public hearings and before city council. They can send letters and emails to their elected officials. Um, they can give money to candidates, uh, knock on doors, they can protest. Um, and they can even express themselves online. Um, all of these things are key to a healthy democracy. Um, but a common tactic that we see to quash that democratic participation and to harass and intimidate individuals who are, um, trying to exercise that freedom is something called doxing. Doxing is posting personal information online. A personal information that is often publicly available if you, if you know where to look for it. So that can be addresses, phone numbers, um, places of employment. This is a tactic that we see and we expect uh, from the alt-right movement that is sadly, um, back in power in Washington. Um, but it's not generally something, I, at least from, from what I have seen, that we see in our local politics here in Pittsburgh. This morning, however, um, I, I learned that the leader of a prominent pro-development advocacy group, uh, Pro Housing Pittsburgh has been doxing folks who disagree with them on Twitter, posting, um, addresses, um, tax information, you know, on back, you know, people owing tax, you know, the information that's available in the, in the county real estate portal. That is totally unacceptable behavior. And I would ask that, uh, my colleagues in city government make a commitment to cut ties with any group that participates in this kind of behavior, whether that's, uh, you know, the, the leadership within their group or the group itself. Um, you know, at this moment in time, and, and I also want to use this as, 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 just as we reflect on the issues that we are talking about, you know, with our hearings that we've seen, the Planning Commission and housing and water and, and, you know, these, these critical issues that affect our residents. I want to remind my colleagues right now that the real estate developer in chief in Washington DC and his tech bro henchmen is currently ransacking our federal government. And while we can debate and disagree and figure out the best way for us to move forward with the various issues that are affecting Pittsburgh today, there is no place for that kind of harassment and intimidation among the folks that we work with here. And so when people come and talk to us, we need to look at those people and ask ourselves who are they and who do we represent? So I'm, I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Teresa Kale Smith?
Thank you. I, to response to Councilwoman Warwick, I think we should be asking who's coming here and who's, and who they represent. And that includes a lot of the advocates and, um, advocacy groups and activist groups that come here. We have a lot of people receiving, we saw a lot of funding, um, and from, coming from different interest groups. And honestly, I don't think anybody should be harassed. I think that we should all have our opportunity to talk and talk about the issues and the subjects and, and address policy. If you can't do that, maybe you should rethink your involvement, I think. But I do think that everybody has the right to have their voices heard. I also am concerned about the funding coming. I honestly think at this point, we need some type of investigation into the whole zoning thing, because there's so much happening. And so that may be the next thing I ask for, um, as this continues, because I think that, you know, we have a post agenda. I'm going to work with you on getting that scheduled to understand the zoning and what that, what happens with all that. But I do think that there's a lot happening and a lot of people are putting money into Pittsburgh and into Pittsburgh politics and try, and there's elections coming up, so everybody's doing everything they can. And in the meantime, our residents are in the middle of all this, you know? And so it's not helping anybody. And let's come together and try to figure out some real solutions for the people that we represent. Um, but I will, if, you know, for this, after our post agenda, if, you know, this continues, I will be calling for some type of investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasberg.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to change the subject briefly and address directly those, uh, who spoke at Public Comment today, who visited us from the borough of Pleasant Hills. And they spoke on the policy on immigrants here in Pittsburgh. Um, I wanted to take the time because this is our time to address Public Comment. We don't typically address public, public comment as it happens. So I'm grateful for them for coming back in and listening to what I have to say. Uh, I take major issue with their hateful and inaccurate rhetoric about their fellow human beings wrapped in a veneer of concern trolling and fear mongering. Pittsburgh is indeed a welcoming city and proudly so, because we're a city that's built by and of immigrants. And this is a certification status, not just a name, because we know that the vast majority of immigrants and refugees who have chosen Pittsburgh as their home have come here through the legal channels and because they play a crucial re, wet role in boosting our economy, revitalizing communities that experienced population loss post deindustrialization, growing our population, and helping us become a more beautiful tapestry of cultures and diversity. What's happening currently isn't just a targeting of those with undocumented status with a criminal record or currently in Allegheny County Jail, uh, which I will note is run by the county and not the city. But there, ICE is conducting raids indiscriminately, targeting, targeting immigrants who happen to be brown and black and striking fear in the heart of individuals and families afraid of being torn apart. So to be clear, the city is complying with all federal and state laws in this regard. We have long had an unbiased policing policy, which I will note did not begin with this mayor. And that means that our police, our EMS, and our fire bureaus, our public safety department overall, do not ask the citizenship status of anyone they interact with. They're not skirting the law by doing this. This is fully lawful and in fact helps improve our public safety that the speakers who joined us from Pleasant Hills insinuated was a crisis level problem, which the data will show is indeed false. Why does this improve public safety? Just imagine that someone who happens to be an immigrant, regardless of their status, who is, say, violently attacked or maybe burglarized or sexually assaulted. Do we want them to feel as if they can't call the police and report the assailant so it can be tracked down and dealt with? We want them to call the police because that's what helps us make us a safe city. But if they were to shy away from calling the police or other first responders out of fear of being detained, that would arguably, arguably make us a less safe city. We have already enough of a hurdle gaining the trust of our new Americans. We don't need more ways to add to that. I'd also like to make a correction on terminology. The official recognized term is undocumented immigrant, not illegal alien. I say this because I don't want to be the language police, but words matter and we know painfully well the end result of what happens when we use dehumanizing language scapegoated in, uh, scapegoating, uh, community members, um, um, and using that language to scape, to help further scapegoat them and target them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Any, any other member? Councilman Sharlin?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you. And it's, uh, through our comments, we're obviously, uh, working on a lot of different things here and you know, I, uh, very much appreciate all the efforts that everyone is making right now. Um, I don't want to address, uh, you know, the, the Planning Commission or, or comments regarding that. But I want to make sure that council members are aware of something I just found out last night. Our three-one-one system is, um, we're, we're changing over this week. And we have moved from using the, the Q Alert system to the Salesforce system. The intention was that both systems- the Q Alert system to the Salesforce system. The intention was that both systems would run concurrently during that time period. If you called three-one-one, um, we would have, you know, uh, an ability to, to work through some of the bugs, because we would still have the Q Alert system up. The Q Alert system goes out, or doesn't work after Wednesday. So, uh, we're really only getting two days, uh, or I guess, three days of overlap there. I'm very concerned about what this means in terms of our, our ability to deliver for residents, and definitely think this is something that should have been communicated to us as council members. I know that we asked a lot of questions about bringing in the new, uh, the new contract and, and how that was gonna work, but we were all assured that there was gonna be a time period where, um, both systems were operating, so we, so nothing was lost. I'm, I'm not sure that's gonna happen, because, uh, you know, we're, we're only dealing with these couple of days here. I, I, I don't know what to do with that information. I just learned it last night, and, um, but I, I really think this is something we need to investigate a little bit more, and, and if, if nothing else, I feel that it's something that we really should have been communicated, or that should have been communicated to us as council members, because that was all of our understandings when we, we talked about, um, this, this contract going for bid and, and starting the new software and the implementation. I don't know if this was, you know, uh, be, uh, s-, related to a staffing shakeup in the mayor's office or anything like that. I, again, I, I found out last night, but I want to make sure that you, we are all, all aware of that, and that we're able to, um, to deliver, you know, services people call through one for, uh, in the city here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I was not aware, so thank you for that. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. I just wanted to, um, let Mr. Sharlin know that I've just asked my staff to reach out to Director Norman ASAP, so we can clarify the, the situation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, we do have meeting announcements this afternoon at one o'clock. Council will hold an executive session on bills fourteen fifty-nine and fourteen sixty as relate to litigation matters. Tomorrow, Wednesday, February fifth at ten AM, council will hold our standing committee meeting. Speaker of Registration will close at nine AM. Also tomorrow at one thirty, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill thirteen oh three relative to zoning in the North Oakland neighborhood, and Bill thirteen forty-three relative to Central Catholics Institutional Master Plan. Speaker of Registration will close at twelve PM the day of the hearings. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill up the sign-up form at the Council meeting webpage, or call the clerk's office at four one two two five five twenty-one thirty-eight. With that, we need a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.